Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to start tonight's forum. My name is Dennis Preston and I am serving as the president of the Waynesville Community Teachers Association for this school year. Our CTA represents over 400 of our district's teachers, nurses, cooks, bus drivers, and custodians. We are proud to host tonight's event. At this time, I am pleased to introduce tonight's officials. Serving as your timekeeper tonight is Ms. Cecilia Swain, who teaches mathematics at Waynesville Middle School. Tonight's moderator, Mrs. Kelly Gard, is a foreign language teacher at Waynesville Middle School.
Good evening. Again, I'm Kelly Gard and I am pleased to serve as your moderator this evening. On behalf of the Waynesville CTA, I would like to welcome everyone present and in our viewing audience to the annual Meet the Candidates Forum. I would like to introduce several individuals we are honored to have present with us tonight. Please hold all applause until the end. It is our privilege to have in attendance members of our Board of Education. Members, please stand or wave. President, Paul Schultz. Board Vice President, Leroy Fulmer. Board Secretary, Butch O'Reilly. Board Treasurer, Dan Deering. Board Member, Mike Keeling. Board Member, Charles Quinn. And Board Member, Janet Kreider. And our Superintendent, Dr. Brian Henry. We also want to extend our thanks to Mr. Randy Lubert, our high school principal; Ms. Clarissa Guffey, high school librarian; and Mr. Tim Wallace, WCC video production instructor, for their help in making this evening a success. Let's give everyone a warm welcome. Election Day is Tuesday, April 2nd, and tonight we have six candidates running for two open positions on our school board. The candidates are: Mr. Rick Harn; Mr. Charles Howard; Mr. Andy Anderson; Mr. Charles Quinn; Mr. Aaron Pondrum; and Mr. Christopher Kramer. We thank each of you for your interest to serve the students of Waynesville School District and for your attendance tonight. The task for which you are volunteering is not an easy one, and we thank you for stepping up to this challenge. Thank you. Tonight, each candidate will be given a chance to share a biography and a synopsis of their reasons for seeking election to our Board of Education. Following their opening statements, each will be asked to answer two questions and then give a closing thought. Candidates, good luck. Candidates, you will each have two minutes to give a brief statement about why you are seeking election to our Board of Education. We will begin with you, Mr. Harn.
Thank you, and good evening. First, I would like to thank everyone in attendance tonight and for those joining us from their home. First and foremost, I appreciate this community and our great school district. My family and I have lived here in Waynesville since 2006, which is my second time here, with the first being in 1999 for one year when the Army's Military Police School relocated here from Fort McClellan, Alabama. My wife Ginger is a recovering educator who has excelled in many different facets from the private school education, Department of Defense schools, paraprofessional work, special needs classrooms, and just about every job in between. We have a tremendous son, Ryan, who graduates with the good Lord willing in a few weeks from Waynesville High School. I am a retired military police army first sergeant with over 22 years of active duty service. We are very fortunate to have had Ryan attend all four years of high school here in the district. Our family is very proud to be involved in the many of the school's programs. As parents, I am also active in our church, and I gladly welcome the opportunity to serve the community as a member of the Board of Education. My motto is very simple, and it is in the correct order. Your children, our schools, my priorities. We must get the first two correct every single day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harn. Mr. Howard.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to start off with protocol and just give an honor to Dr. Henry and his outstanding staff and board members that already exist. And once again, to all those on protocol and those I don't know the call, I'm just glad to be here this evening. Amen. I just want to tell you a little bit about myself. Once again, my name is Charles Howard. I have over 20 years both in the private and public education system. I'm a certified instructor. I've already put two kids through the Waynesville R6 School District, and we have one more to go. Amen. Also, I have over 20 years of financial management experience, and I hold certifications in as a Certified Business Analyst Professional, which is CBAP, International Institute of Business Analyst from Villanova University. Also holding associate's and bachelor's degrees in financial management with a minor in Computer Information Systems Support from Columbia. Also have two unique skill sets in my acumen that I believe that have prepared me for service on the board. I was also a management analyst where I served as a budget management evaluator for a multifaceted standardization evaluation and assistance team, seat team program, where I developed checklists for functional areas of budget management. Also assisted in development of doctrinal and policy inputs to develop process of single service, multi-service, and joint policy and doctrinal publications, conducted field evaluations, budget management to determine the level of compliance of designated military organizations within law, policy, and doctrine, and special directors governing budget management. Along with serving on the Criminal Investigations Division, I just shared that, a little bit of that, I'm able to keep a secret, where I've held TSI, TS and SCI, secret clearances. Thank you again for allowing me to be here today, and I'm just proud to be a part of this panel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Mr. Anderson.
Hi, I'm Andy Anderson, and I would like to course thank the CTA, the Waynesville School District, those in the audience and those at home for participating in this forum, because it is important to know who is on your school board and basically who's in charge of your kids. I mean, you know, all of us, if you're a parent, that should be your priority. As a Christian man, I believe that giving back to our community is the right thing to do. It is better to serve than to be served. By getting involved, volunteering, sharing our experiences with our children and others, we are shaping, molding, and mentoring our children and our future through quality education. I mean, that is, that's why we're here. Why are we here? The children are the future. By doing this, it will make a better place to live now and continue to make a great community and a place to live and for our children, for us. And I just, thanks for being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Quinn.
Well, first of all, let me start by basically saying as a current board member, kind of walk down memory lane just a little bit. For the first year as a board member, you're still learning and adjusting to board policies and a lot of the other new ones. You're getting involved in supporting administration and the staff as we collaborate to establish policies, bring correction, and equip our students, teachers, and support staff with the right tools for success. You're attending conferences, seminars, and workshops to better equip yourself to be an advocate for the school, the board, and the district. In the middle part of your term, you'll continually to build relationships with the board members, the administration, the community, and becoming a team while maintaining your own unique convictions. The latter part of your term, you're learning how to, the mindset and the rhythm of the current members' flow, your role, and where you fit, who's closely connected, and when to fall on your sword and when to stand for your convictions. You're learning how to assist the whole for the betterment of the district, the kiddos, the teachers, and the support staff. It's important to become a team player, but without losing your own individuality. I came with an agenda, and that agenda was to assist the board, this district, in equipping our students, our teachers, and support staff in the community with the best tools possible to get the best results. I want to kind of debunk the fallacy that one person can fight against six other voting members to push their own agenda. We all come with community and vote issues as well as some of our own issues with the board. But being a part of a great team, I have learned that we all want the best for our kids in this community. And when we unite with friendly, knowledgeable hearts and mindset, it's not about our private individual agenda, but about a unified collaboration that produces the best course of action. I'm seeking reelection because really, after three years, you only just begun.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Mr. Pondrum.
Good evening. I would like to thank the Waynesville CTA for hosting this event and providing the opportunity for the public to hear from each of the candidates. I'd also like to thank the school district, present and past board members, my fellow candidates, and our entire community for the school district they have built, and more importantly, thank you to everyone in attendance and those watching at home. My wife Anne and I have lived in our community since 1999. We were both raised one hour from Waynesville, Anne in Freeburg and I in Sullivan. We have two children attend school in the district, Isabella, who is a sophomore at the high school, and Carter, a student at the sixth grade center. I'm a 1996 graduate of the University of Missouri Columbia, where I received a Bachelor of Science in Fisheries and Wildlife. I currently serve as a conservation agent for the Missouri Department of Conservation and have served 22 years as a law enforcement officer, two years as a police officer, 20 as a conservation agent, with the last 11 as a supervisor. As a conservation agent, I'm fortunate to have the opportunity to present information on conservation topics at each of the district's schools. Each time I visit our schools, I see classrooms filled with our nation's future leaders. Therefore, it is vitally important that each student has every opportunity to be successful and learn skills which prepare them for their future careers or continued education. I truly care about the success and welfare of the students and the quality and happiness of the employees of the district. It is my belief that we have an outstanding school district filled with passionate and dedicated teachers, administrators, and support staff. I am seeking election to the Waynesville Board of Education because I want to ensure that district continues on a path of sustained academic success, keeps the safety of our students and employees at the forefront of every decision, and continues to develop and retain high-quality staff.
Thank you, Mr. Pondrum. Mr. Kramer.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. So, my name is Chris Kramer, and I am seeking election because we, as a national cohort, are facing some significant challenges. As a 23-year veteran of the United States Army, I've been around the world, I've been around a lot of places in the United States. I'm a veteran of two foreign wars, and I've been to quite a lot of different countries and a lot of cultures, and a lot of people from across the world. The most important thing that we do as a national cohort is educate our children and defend our country. So, what I want to do is show you a couple of things up front that might be a little bit mind-blowing to you, but I think it's important that we make this plain. Got a couple of training aids here, as they call it in the military. This is a, no kidding, a couple of years old statistic. This is how the United States fared in terms of math, science, and reading compared to countries around the world. This bar here in the middle is the average of these countries. This is where the United States stands in math, far below average. This is where the United States stands basically average in science and about the same in reading. It's a very sobering chart. What makes it worse is that a lot of people who are national competitors in the areas of economics, policy, you name it, our competitors are up here at the top. So, that's not good. Something else I want to show you. In 2016, our high school students took ACT tests. What you can see here is graded, and as you can see over here, the legend from dark blue is the best, and then dark red is the worst. This is where the ACT scores fell. Missouri was seventh from the lowest tier in ACT scores. So, what we need to do collectively is not focus on how we do in the district or how we do in the state. We need to focus on how we do against these other people in the countries and these blue states who are being so high achievers. That is a very important thing. How can I help? As I said, I've got a 23-year record of proven leadership within the military, from the platoon to the battalion level. I've been around the world, and I know how to find solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. We will now move on to our first question. Each of you will have three minutes to answer. Tell us about your interaction and involvement with the school district over the past three years. We will begin this time with Mr. Howard.
Thank you again. Good evening. Again, my name is Charles Howard, and both my wife and I are both registered volunteers with the community, and we try to provide support more from your community push area. We have different programs, mentorship programs within our organization, within our church, Agape Church. We try to help the kids with civility and their character building, team building exercise. We host camp in the summertime, usually a three-day camp, where we teach them team building, so that they can be more productive when attending school with their behavior and provide them with the tools to equip them with when they come back to school, they're ready in a posture to learn. We also have, which we've been experiencing here lately, a lot of success with, it's a particular program we have called Straight Talk, where we work with the young people with their emotional and cognitive development from a healthcare perspective. It's a forum much like this where there's no parents involved. We have two senior of our staff that are there, where the young people begin to talk about anything that is on their heart, and we help them from a spiritual and biblical perspective to be able to get their questions answered and get heard. So, mainly for us, for me, within the school district, other than running for the board about a year and a half ago, really, that's been my involvement with volunteering whatever the school district needs. I'm retired now, I'm here to provide such assistance. And I'd just like to close with a coin for my homiletic hero and Morehouse man, Howard Thurman, who says, "Don't ask what the world needs, but ask what makes you come alive and go do it." For what the world needs is more people who have come alive. And it's truly my passion, and what makes me come alive is to serve, and so look forward to serving you on the school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Mr. Anderson.
Okay. On the question, it says, "What have you done the last three years with the district?" Well, the last two of the three years, I was on the school board, basically for two years, two of the three years. This is, and the last year, basically, my interaction with the school board has basically been as more of a spectator than an overseer, I guess you'd say, on the board. Of course, I do, you know, I'm a Waynesville graduate, I'm a Tiger, so when there's a sporting event, a fine art event, or there's something in the community that's going on, I try to make it a priority to show up, you know, because as you say, we should support our kids, support the community. And so, basically, my involvement is basically for the last year has just been trying to show up to, you know, things that we're doing. And before that, of course, I was on the school board, and with two years, we were pretty active with the middle school project, which is still going on, you know, different projects. Of course, you know, we talking about, we can do map scores, and we can talk about MSET and CSET and all that stuff that the superintendents are, you know, drilling on us all the time, but data, 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 but, you know, I mean, that was my involvement, you know, for being on the board, and of course, trying to make, you know, our school the best it could be, and that's our goal as a school board. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Quinn.
Thank you. As a current board member, I have attended monthly meetings, closed, open, and steady groups, along with special board meetings, all posted, within and outside our district. I have had the pleasure to attending new teachers and student inductions, graduations, spoke at baccalards, attended sport activities, pep rallies, band concerts, award ceremonies, appreciation, parent-teachers meeting, college informative events, and retirements. I have been invited for walkthroughs in our wonderful facilities and schools, participated in groundbreaking events, and new facility walkthroughs. I've interacted with this administration to ensure our schools are equipped with all the necessary personnel and tools to ensure our schools meet their quotas and their qualifications. Also, it's been a pleasure to also provide the assistance to our students and to the best education possible, which include a safe environment. I have assisted in overlooking and evaluating past policies to ensure they are still effective, as well as making new policies. I have assisted in revamping antiquated equipment as well as antiquated ideas. I have been involved in the discipline hiring and firing process as well as legal actions. I have been involved in the reading events, plays, skits, and the playing, and the making of our school gardens. I have interacted with our financial gurus to ensure our district is well able to fund all ongoing and futuristic projects. I have laughed with teachers and cried with our staff over the loss of loved ones. I have spoken with our future leaders and heard their hearts on several personal concerns. I have had the privilege to be involved with assisting teachers through the administration to face and prevail over challenges. I have heard the concerns of our community and brought those ideals back to the board, which in turn discussed and took appropriate actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Mr. Pondrum.
I have been an active participant in the Waynesville School District for the past 10 years. I have children who've attended East, Freedom, the sixth grade center, middle school, and high school. My wife and I have been active participants in our children's education and have served as volunteers at these schools. I've had many experiences interacting with the school district as a parent and in my work experiences over the past three years. For example, earlier this month, I presented to eighth-grade math students at the middle school as part of their project-based learning assignment on the book World Without Fish. In January, I presented information to a lead group at East Elementary to show students the process on how to select the proper tree for their playground. Last year, I presented on Missouri Biomes to fifth-grade students at Freedom Elementary as part of their PBL. And in 2017, I presented material invertebrate groups to fifth-grade students at Freedom as part of their project-based learning assignment as well. Later that year, I participated in mock job interviews with students at the sixth grade center as part of their PBL, and I've presented programs on mammals to classes at East, Freedom, Thayer, and Partridge. I've supplied materials, equipment, and support to teachers at Waynesville Middle School to teach hunter education. And for the last 20 years, I've worked with the conservation department to partner with the school district and Kiwanis Club to take special needs students fishing for both trout and catfish. This past year, I've also helped prepare the high school softball field for our home games and attended away softball, home and away softball, basketball, and football, as well as musical performances, board meetings, and other school activities.
Thank you, Mr. Pondrum. Mr. Kramer.
Yes, thank you. So, having three kids in the district gives me pretty good insight into kind of what happens inside the school. Two of those children have been in the school since grade school, and having three kids that you're able to talk to, I get quite a lot of information about what goes on before school, after school, in the hallways, in the classroom, out of the classroom. So, I get quite a lot of information from those kids, and that's sort of from the kid's perspective. In addition to that, I have been to board meetings, award ceremonies, sporting events, band performances, parent-teacher meetings, and also, last year, I did run on success for the board, so I've got a bit of experience in that, and that concludes this piece of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Mr. Harn.
Good evening. Currently serve as the Executive Director for the Military Police Regimental Association. I've been in that job for about 10 years, and with that job, provides me a lot of opportunity to relate with the community and work with the community. A few years ago, I was asked to sit and be an original board member of the Waynesville School Foundation, and I was helped, asked to help develop their Hall of Leaders program. I was able to write that program, the curriculum that goes into that, the rubric for evaluating that program, and last year, we inducted our first three inductees in that tremendous program. The two categories that I assisted with and spent a lot of time on developing were the lifetime achievement and alumni, and the outstanding educational professionals. A quote from our foundation president, "Being inducted into the Hall of Leaders will be one of the most prestigious recognitions anyone could receive." I've assisted with many school-related events. One in particular that I've taken a lot of pride in over the years is the Route 66 shootouts. And what I've done with those is take these children, a lot of them from St. Louis, I have worked partnerships out with some of the local businesses to provide these players free meals when they come here, sometimes a very discounted lodging. So, these kids, and when they come here and they see the Waynesville High School, they think they're on a college campus, because some of them, they've never seen anything Because some of them, they've never seen anything like this, and I'm very proud that I was able to be a part of that. Another thing that I was asked to sit on for the first time this year was the Comprehensive School Improvement Program, and what an eye-opening experience that was to see the group of professionals in the room working together with one end state, and that is to make sure we're doing the best we can for our kids. I've assisted with various events in connecting some community leaders with school leaders at different venues. And most recently, very proud of the fact that we was able to get the Missouri Special Olympics programs connected back with the Waynesville District in the capacity that they are. I try to live each day by this saying, "The measure of a man's greatness is not in the number of servants he has, but with the number of people he serves." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harn. All right. You will have three minutes to answer question number two. What are the top two or three things which most impact student achievement, and how can you, as a board member, influence and support those items? We will begin with Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. I believe that safety and security of the students and the staff should be the number one priority of all school districts regardless of the cost. Because I believe that as parents, we need to know that when basically we drop our kids off at the school, or we put them on the school bus, that when they show up, they will be in a safe place and that the parents don't have to worry about it. I believe that no bullying, no harassment or no harm will come to these students when they come to our school, and that we do everything possible to make sure that happens. Likewise, teachers, support staff and administration should not have to worry about anything when they come to work. They shouldn't have to look over their shoulder, they shouldn't have to be thinking about what if this happens or what if that happens. They shouldn't be distracted at all. They should be able to come into work, they should be able to focus 110% on teaching and educating children, doing it to the best of their ability. And my second part of that question is, I think the morale is very important in all aspects depending where you work. I work for the post office and we have these briefings all the time. But the morale of the employees is the key to the success, to be successful in what you're trying to accomplish. For example, a happy wife, happy life, happy home. I've been married for 32 years, and I'm just saying, fellas, that's how it works, okay? And the same analogy for a happy employee makes for happy learning environments, which produces a happy workplace, which results in higher academics and higher test scores. I mean, if you're happy and you want to come to work and you like coming to work, you're going to give 110%. You're going to come early, you're going to stay late, you're going to do what it takes to get the job done. And in the result, the kids are going to know it, and it will show. I mean, it will, if you show that you're there, you're happy, you care, the results are going to be there. And so that's what I believe the most, what I believe is security and the morale of the employees is very important in any establishment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Quinn.
Ditto.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Quinn.
For me, just two or three things which mostly impact student achievement is kind of hard. I believe all students should be afforded the necessary tools for achievement. But that encompasses, number one, not only educated, certified, non-biased teachers, but teachers who are not only book smart, but people sensitive. Each student learns differently, and each student is dealing with different life challenges. Number two, equipping them with the right educational tools and instilling the knowledge of that technology. Number three, a structured, disciplined, consistent learning environment, which includes a safe environment and parent environment. I am an advocate for EQ or IQ or emotional intelligence because it can be difficult for our kiddos to learn educational principles when they are still trying to figure out life, peer pressure and home issues. We need psychoeducational tools to assist our students and parents on how emotional intelligence can be effective in learning. With that, I think as a current board member, I can be very influential to our board members on these issues because I know the board and I have, over the past years, built a rapport with them. I have seen them in action and trust them and they trust me. What I like about the current board members is they know when to go in with a machete or dynamite, or they know when to go in with a very patient and calm spirit and also a surgical scalpel. We don't always agree on everything, but we know how to disagree, but stay focused and keep unity. We may be, we may get messy in the kitchen at times, but we come out and we serve an excellent meal. So with that, to me, it takes really a support staff, good educational tools and a safe environment for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Mr. Pondrum.
I believe the top things which most impact student achievement are curriculum which challenges and engages students and teachers in smaller class sizes, educators who are enthusiastic and committed to student success, and parental involvement and communication with educators along with low student absentee rates. Student success is a collaborative effort between the school district, the student and their parents. It is not the sole responsibility of the school and teacher to educate students. It's a team effort which begins with the student, and the student is supported by their parents at home to reinforce classroom instruction. Board members can influence student achievement by ensuring educators are fully supported by administration, have sufficient funding for their classroom, and have class sizes where they can effectively teach and manage students. They should also encourage and support positive school environments which increase teacher morale, and educators have the flexibility to teach and foster student learning.
Thank you, Mr. Pondrum. Mr. Kramer.
Thank you. So as you've kind of already heard, it's very difficult to winnow down a very large list of things that we need to take care of down to two or three. So, since we live in a very, very fast-moving world and we have to pick two or three, I'll go ahead and pick what I think to be the three most important. We kind of already talked about it, and one is mindset, and that is a positive mental attitude. Very few endeavors you go into with a negative mental mindset will you be able to succeed. A positive mental mindset will enable a lot. It will overcome deficiencies you've got in many other pieces of your life. If you go in and you are exercising yourself to your maximum ability with that proper mindset, that can achieve a lot. So you have to have confidence. Where do you get confidence? That confidence comes from success, it comes from reinforcement of success, it comes from things like positive reinforcement in the classroom and at home. So there's a lot of pieces that go into that mindset thing. But for a student to have a desire to learn and a desire to achieve, that is sort of the holy grail, the golden nugget that we have to get to. Because everybody has that ability, it might not be in the same subjects or the same areas, but they have that. So growing that and fostering that is where we need to get to, mindset. The second one is preparation. Preparation comes from study, it comes from readiness. So we have students in the district who come from a lot of different backgrounds, some homes are extremely oriented on, and as was kind of said here earlier tonight, education, partly because the parents are educators and they know these kind of things. They know how to train, educate, they know how to apportion time, study habits, goal setting. There's a lot of different things that are out there. So that preparation is very key, and that comes from the student, but it also comes from the school, the scholastic environment, and it also comes from the parents, it also comes from the teachers and frankly, our society. This school district has a not-inconsiderable impact on the local society. So those legs, those pieces of that stool are very, very important. But preparation is important. You can have a great mindset, but if you go into something unprepared, you are not going to succeed. So, thinking critically is a huge piece of preparation. And those charts I showed you a little bit ago, they show the extreme importance of critical thinking. Again, mindset, preparation and a sub of that is critical thinking. The third is support. And that is support in the classroom and at home. And I got to say it, in the age of cyberbullying, in the age of, you know, anti-intellectualism, that is a societal issue that we have to make sure that we correct. So frankly, we talked about hatchets and machetes and dynamite a little bit ago, I think we should all have less than a zero tolerance of things like cyberbullying. We should have an attitude of achievement, an attitude of gratitude, and a system where everyone, that is parents, teachers, educators, peers, has a desire to see themselves and everybody else succeed. So mindset, preparation and support. And I have 23 years of experience in how to make that happen.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Mr. Harn.
Thank you. Before I answer or focus on the two questions that I had, I'd like to personally thank the current board. Seeing just some of the board meetings that I've been to and seeing you in the community and seeing the passion you have, so I just want to say thank you for what you do. Not a paying job, obviously, so you're doing this on your own time and that's certainly appreciated. But the two topics, the questions that I had that I'd like to touch on, and some of the other candidates touched briefly on them, is set clear and high expectations for quality work. Our school board is responsible, as has been said, for making student achievement the primary focus of our district. The board fulfills this responsibility by establishing the vision for the district, establishing policy, exercising strong staff leadership while maintaining community relationships and ensuring accountability. Accountability includes student learning, resource management and the professional development of the staff. The second one that I chose was set a climate of mutual respect and safety. Has been touched on, having students and staff develop and agree upon a set of guidelines that are acceptable for classroom behavior based on the idea of mutual respect and everyone's right to learn in a safe and secure environment. Enforcing these guidelines strictly and consistently, and the students will rise and exceed expectations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harn. And Mr. Howard.
I promise you, it was in my notes to thank Dr. Henry and the current board members. I think he was looking on my paper over here, I really do believe he was. You know, my answer is, I don't know. I think one of the worst things you can do is to come into an environment and feel like you have all the answers. I don't believe a good sign of a good leader is that you know everything. But I believe a good sign of a good leader is that you know where to go to get the right answers. And so, I mean, what I did was I just, I canvassed some parents and teachers and I would say students to fill me with the answers, because I believe they have the answers. And I ascribe to more of a servant leadership methodology approach. It's not my job to command, it's my job to fall in line, be a part of a team and to serve. So having said that, very simplistically, here's what I got. Two most things that impact student achievement. Number one is attendance. They can't achieve if they're not in school. Attendance and engagement. If they are in school, they got to be engaged. They're both directly influenced by positive relationships with the staff. Recruitment and retention of the highest-quality staff will encourage our students to want to be at school and to be fully engaged and present. Last but not least, as a board member, realistically, I can't be in the trenches every day on a daily basis. Yet what I can do is help position the right people in our schools that have the people's skills and the kids' skills every day, who will implement innovation and caring and positive learning environments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Candidates, thank you for all of those comments. All right. For our closing thoughts, you will each have two minutes to answer this question. What are some experiences you've had and qualities you possess that make you a great choice to serve on the board? We're going to begin this one with Mr. Quinn.
Thank you. I would say identify is my key word for this portion here. Being a proud parent of four kids, one who graduated from Waynesville, I identify with the parents and their desires for their kids to receive the best educational possible in a safe environment. Being a recipient of five earned degrees, two being master's degrees and working on my PhD, I identify with the students and the tough challenges they face, along with home life and other distractions. I come from a very large family, so I can identify with some of the challenges they face. In the military, as a master instructor and a first sergeant for over 25 years of military service, I can somewhat identify with the teachers. In the military, as an NCOR head or the master instructor department leader, having several instructors and students under my charge, having deadlines and quotas and standards, I can somewhat identify with some of the principles. Working in the White House for over eight years, I can somewhat identify with the policies and the levies. Being military retired, I can somewhat identify with the military populace. Being in this community for over 14 years, I can identify with the community and its concerns. As a certified provisional licensed counselor, I can identify with the counselors. As a current board member, I can identify with the past, current and future issues that we face. At this point, as I experienced the board leaders, I can identify with the board members and administration of this board. Being in the military, I've had the privilege to work with other school systems and districts, both Conors and Oakonors, so I can identify and come with a fresh look to the table. You may not recognize it, but I'm minority, so I can identify a little bit with the minority population in the school system. And as a preacher, if there's any praying before an exam, I can identify with that too.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Mr. Pondrum.
Thank you. Qualities and life experiences which I will bring to the Waynesville Board of Education are: 22 years of experience as a law enforcement officer. I understand how to manage conflict, build relationships and work as a team to achieve goals. 11 years leading our youth coaching soccer, basketball and softball. 20 years of experience working directly with school districts throughout Plasky County to provide classroom and outdoor education programs, fishing clinics, hunter education, firearm safety classes. The ability to understand difficult and complex situations and experience with collaborating with federal, state and local governments to implement projects. What you will get from me if I'm elected are commitment, accountability, integrity and common sense. I am dedicated to our schools and community to make them a better place for us now and for the future. Our school district is not about any one student, teacher, administrator or board member. It's about every child, teacher and employee in our school district and creating an environment which fosters student learning, development and achievement. Our community is blessed to have passionate, exceptional staff serving our children to help them realize and achieve their fullest potential. This is what I believe and plan to continue if elected. Sustained academic excellence, the safety of students and staff and the development and retention of world-class employees are expectations of both families and the employees of the district. The Waynesville School District has a strong history of leadership and accomplishment in these areas, and I look forward to contributing to its continued success. I am fortunate to be a part of this process and would be honored to receive your vote next Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pondrum. Mr. Kramer.
Thank you. I know I'm supposed to talk about myself for a couple of minutes, but first thing I want to say is, you all are very, very experienced, you are very professional, and as a fellow candidate, I think that whoever gets selected for these positions, the board is going to get an outstanding person or persons. It is fantastic. So thank you all for doing this, I really appreciate it. And I think everybody can see, these guys are very, very qualified, so very good on those guys. But a little bit about me. 23 years of experience, I've been around the world, I've been around the United States, kind of talked about that before. I'm a veteran of two foreign wars. I have deployments to overseas locations. In addition to that, I've actually got two deployments to the US-Mexico border, which has been so much in the news lately. So I've been to a lot of different places and seen a lot of different things up close. I've led soldiers in and out of combat, so I've seen soldiers at the most stressful situations, and I've seen them in relatively not so stressful situations. Most of those soldiers were very young, 18 to 20 years old, sometimes the occasional 17-year-old. So I have seen folks in a lot of different situations and, as we've mentioned, conflict resolution and how to lead soldiers slash young people is a skill that I've picked up over those 23 years. I was an award-winning instructor inside the military as well, and later on, I came back to actually lead an organization, the United States Army Engineer Schools Department of Instruction. So I came back 15 years later from being an award-winning instructor to lead that department. I've been blue collar and white collar, I've pumped gas, delivered pizzas and then been an army officer for 23 years, so I've seen it all. I know how to counsel and guide young people. I've led people from all walks of life. As was discussed just a second ago, we do not come from the same backgrounds, and I have met and led those people of different ability levels, family situations, you name it. And I think I'm a candidate for this job because I know how to lead, to train, to educate and motivate, and I've always been successful in those endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Mr. Harn.
Thank you. As a district, we have accomplished a lot. We have maintained our commitment to quality teaching, learning and preparing our students for success while being excellent stewards of our resources and taking care of our staff. This opportunity will give me a chance to lend my knowledge, experience and interest to the continued success of this district. The main quality that I will bring to the board is my individual perspective as a military-connected community member. I feel that my knowledge of the military, experience and awareness of defense community issues will continue to be beneficial to our district and our community. I remember sitting one night in a palace in Tikrit, Iraq in 2006 and was asked by a senior military official what I wanted to do when my tour was completed, and my answer was to go to Fort Leonard Wood and lead soldiers. At that moment, I could have went anywhere in the world, but I chose here. This district played a huge role in that decision. I grew up in Maryland, but Waynesville is my home. In closing, regardless of the upcoming election results, I would like to say a heartfelt thank you to all the professional staff of administrators, teachers, counselors, coaches, special program teachers, secretaries, nurses, custodians, food service, maintenance staff, transportation, paraprofessionals and many more that make this machine run each and every day. We should all feel very fortunate to be a part of this outstanding district and should take the time to thank all of you each day for the direct or indirect impact that you have made on our children, including mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harn. Mr. Howard.
Well, I say again, don't vote for me what I say I'm going to do, vote for me what I've already been doing. I warn you, these comments I'm going to make are rated R. The R stands for relevant. I ascribe to the servant leadership methodology approach, and I just want to add value, that's my key, just add value to the already great job that Dr. Henry and his staff, I truly mean that, I mean, the results speak for itself, has already been doing. Just want to be a part of the team to implement, inculcate and support his vision with the synergistic win-win philosophy. Possess honor, candor, transparent, vulnerability. I believe before there's leadership, there's followership. You have to know how to follow a vision, and I just want to follow his vision. No matter who our constituents select, I'm sure you will get a passionate, qualified candidate to support the vision of our superintendent, Dr. Henry, to serve our faculty, parents, teachers and most of all, our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Mr. Anderson.
Okay. In closing, again, I'd like to thank the CTA, the Waynesville School District, those in attendance, those that are watching and those that are here, and of course, those running for school board. I mean, I do, hey, appreciate it, thank you guys for running because like I said, we do need people who are passionate. Me myself, I am very passionate. People ask me, well, why do you keep running for the school board? Well, to me, it's personal. You know, I was a DOD kid when I came here. My, I would say, second stepfather, I was brought here by Uncle Sam, so I'm a DOD kid. Believe it or not, Waynesville was my sixth high school that I went to. This was where I landed, so as far as education, I would say that, no, I probably didn't get the best because I moved around a lot because of military, and of course, you can tell if it's a second stepdad, so I probably come from a dysfunctional family. But I am a Waynesville graduate, 19... But I am a Waynesville graduate in 1980, that would be 39 years ago. I know I'm not that old, but thanks. I served three terms on the Waynesville School District. I have worked for the United States Post Office out on Fort Leonard Wood since 2000, so I'm a veteran, serving veterans. I deliver the mail every day, six days a week, thanks Amazon. I am, of course, a veteran, a veteran of the Forum Board, I do belong to the DAV Chapter 49. If you're not a member, hey, fellas, y'all should join, because you know, that's what we need to do. My wife is a graduate, my children graduated here. My wife is a longtime educator, she retired from Waynesville, and she now likes all teachers, they never retire, they just keep teaching, right, Leroy? And so, she's teaching for Drury and OTC still. My son graduated, he's a teacher in Crocker, he's teaching middle school, following his mother's footsteps, middle school kids, y'all know what I'm talking about. He's also a youth pastor at Berean. My daughter teaches fifth grade in Crocker, currently in Crocker. My niece is teaching, so I'm basically, for the last 39 years, it's been nothing but education for me, so I've been around it and all these people for forever. And like I said, education is very important to me. I think that this statement, true freedom comes through true education, and through true education comes true equality. So, if we really want to have equality, if we really want true freedom, it's through education. Quality education is what brings us all together. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. This concludes our Meet the Candidates Forum. We would like to thank our candidates for participating tonight. Mr. Rick Harn, Mr. Charles Howard, Mr. Andy Anderson, Mr. Charles Quinn, Mr. Aaron Pondrum, and Mr. Christopher Kramer. Audience, let's say thank you to these candidates. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for attending this evening's event. We also want to thank our television audience for watching on Channel 12, and those streaming live on Tiger TV's Facebook page. You didn't know you could do that, did you? A special thank you is extended to Mr. Wallace and his TV journalism students for broadcasting this evening's Meet the Candidate Forum. We have Lily Doba, Alicia Perchman, Lily Harmon, and Grace Christeck. This forum will rebroadcast on Channel 12 Friday, March 29th, Saturday, March 30th, and Sunday, March 31st at 6:00 PM. Set the day, all three days, okay? All three. All right? The election will be held on Tuesday, April 2nd. If you're smart, you'll record it and watch it even again. All right, so again, the election will be April 2nd, let's not miss out on that. We hope this evening has been useful in helping you choose the best candidates. I'm Kelly Guard, and on behalf of our Community Teachers Association, I want to wish everyone a good evening.